Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the City of Prattville tonight. We do have two public hearings first, and then we'll move into our regular council agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Counselor Sanders? Counselor Jackson? Counselor Chambers? Counselor Merrick? Counselor Whaley? Counselor Stritchitt? Counselor Bingham?
Having a quorum present, I will read in public hearing item number one. It is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at Ridgewood Road, North Memorial Drive, 705 Francis Street, 325 Festival Drive, and 113 Quail Run abated, and charge any incurred expenses for the abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in favor of Resolution Number One? Hearing none, is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak against Resolution Number One? Hearing none, we will close that public hearing. We'll move into public hearing number two, which is also a resolution. This is to authorize economic incentives to AJM LLC Prattville, Alabama for Project Queen. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of Resolution Number Two this evening? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against Resolution Number Two this evening? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, state your name and address for the council.
John Lee Finnegan, 211 Dear Trace. I'm basically against this for many reasons. In fact, today I went online and looked up and asked about what their Rural King, which is the Project Queen's revenue was, and they said, "As of September 2025, annual revenue was approximately $2.5 billion." And I'm thinking here, we're going to give them the $5 million tax rebate. Also, I noticed, and I was looking at the resolution, and on September 9th, they had a legal ad in the paper, and it said that the city will consider a resolution concerning the proposed granting on behalf of the city economic incentives through a project development and cooperation agreement, the agreement, with Rural King Realty LLC and Illinois Corporation quote-unquote Rural King, AJM LLC Prattville AL, and Illinois Series Limited Liability Company, AJM, and the city. Then it went on in the ad, and it says, "As specified in the agreement, the public funds and things of value to be granted to Rural King and AJM will consist of a tax rebate." And what I'm questioning is that you only have AJM in the resolution, and yet the legal ad is talking about Rural King and AJM. And I just don't know if, and I'm bringing this up now so that maybe when the resolution comes up, if an amendment needs to be added, that you can add the name. Also, another thing I did not like about this project, it put J&amp;G out of business, and I think they had 140-something vendors also, and I know it's too late now because it's already sold, but I just think we're trying to beautify coming into Prattville, and usually we say by the railroad trestle, but in my mind, having a farm equipment business right there on the main road coming in, just, it doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit. The image we're trying to project of all the stuff that we're doing down in the downtown area, you know, the parks and the beautification and everything, and even the pretty Prattville sign by the railroad trestle, and it just didn't fit. So, that is my reason why I am against it, but mainly that they don't need the money. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next speaker, please. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council.
This council is voting on whether the City of Prattville will grant a refund of up to $5 million in sales tax to Rural King, which is located in Opportunity Zone. If betrayal was a sport, this would be, this resolution would win gold. Has anyone on this council done their research on Rural King and how they do business? In Kingsport, Tennessee, Rural King deceptively added a 1% fee to every customer's receipt, called it an economic development fee, and made it look like it was part of the sales tax, but it wasn't a sales tax at all. None of that economic development fee went to that city. It went to line this private company's pockets. So, who's to say that this national chain, this national chain wouldn't try that here regardless of who's getting that rebate or not? For that matter, I don't think a company that proudly claims, proclaims, "We are a $2.5 billion business and we are growing," even needs such a financial kickback from the city. Again, we were told in Project 2040 that locally grown businesses recirculate two to three times more of their revenue into the local economy compared to national chain businesses. That same document admits that Opportunity Zone programs exist to offer capital gains tax incentives to investors, but it's mainly these national chain businesses who qualify for these programs, which is exactly what we see happening right now. Why does Prattville continuously undermine its own local business owners by not providing them equitable incentives? From my understanding, Rural King is already in agreement to come to Prattville regardless of this tax rebate. What about Prattville's infamous 1% sales tax? Is that going to be refunded to Rural King? The explanation of this public notice is more complex than the actual concept behind it. When you explain this later on, please stick to the beginning, middle, and facts, details, condense the plot, and just tell it how it is. A vote, so, a yes vote signals support for a deal that goes against local business owners and contradicts the values behind Project 2040. A no vote proves that you stand with your constituents and your local business you claim to support. Vote no to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak against Resolution Number Two? Hearing none, we will close this public hearing. At this time, we invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, as well as our invocation, which will be given this evening by Counselor Whaley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow and pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, God, we just thank you for an opportunity to come together tonight, God, as elected representatives of the people of Prattville. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to hear business and to listen to our constituents and the people of the city, and to make decisions. And Father, I pray that as we make those decisions, that we've prayerfully thought out the items that are before us tonight, and God, that we have considered all of the different things that are surrounding these items. And Father, I pray that, God, you just continue to allow us to continue to seek your wisdom as we do the business of the city. Father, we just want to, once again, thank you for the blessings that you continue to pour out on us. Sometimes we forget, God, just to thank you for the blessings of living in a free country, where we can have the freedoms to worship, have the freedoms to a government that will listen. God, we just thank you that you continue to bless us, and we pray that you continue to have us in your light. Lord, that each thing that we do, God, would not only make a difference here, but would make a difference for your kingdom, and it's in Christ's name that we pray these things tonight. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Sanders? Counselor Jackson? Counselor Chambers? Counselor Merrick? Counselor Whaley? Counselor Stritchitt? Counselor Bingham?
Having a quorum present, I do call our meeting to order. The character trait of this month is loyalty, which is demonstrating commitment to others. At this time, we have the opportunity to approve the minutes from the public hearing and city council meeting held August the 19th, 2025, to the special called city council meeting on September the 2nd, 2025, and the public hearing and city council meeting on September the 2nd, 2025. Do I hear a motion to approve these minutes? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the minutes are approved. At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda only. We do have two comment portions, and this will be items that we are voting on this evening. If we are not voting on it, we ask that you hold your comments until the latter period, which will be towards the end of the meeting. If so, we ask that you come forward, write your name and address for the council, and you will have three minutes to address the council.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I don't mean to be impertinent, because it's against the rules to be impertinent. I've never in my life seen a rule like that, where a member of the public is not allowed to be impertinent. Y'all know what that word means?
Mr. Apprizio, we ask that you please address the council, not the audience.
I'm asking you not to try to chill people's First Amendment speech by saying that they can't be impertinent. So, at the risk of being impertinent, I would like to address the council's decision to assist these aid, these, what are they called? ICE raids? What do y'all call them?
Mr. Apprizio.
Excuse me? I'm talking, I have two minutes and 16 seconds.
No, ma'am, you cannot speak.
Laura Leaboon? Excuse me, I have two minutes and...
No, ma'am, you may speak.
Am I being impertinent? Why are y'all assisting in ICE raids? Why are you... Excuse me?
You may address this.
Why are you assisting in ICE raids? Is this on? Am I being impertinent?
We're going to ask that you step back, or that we will escort you from the room.
We don't want 17 ICE raids.
Mr. Apprizio.
Were there 17? My question for the council is, were there 17 ICE raids? Is this on? Can you hear me? Am I being impertinent?
Or you may be escorted out.
Are you funding this? I already know the answer, you tell me.
Mr. Chief of Police, will you please escort Mr. Apprizio from the building?
When the police of Prattville should be concerned with keeping our streets safe, not taking innocent people, and putting them in death camps. Shame on all of you. At the risk of being impertinent, get fucked.
And all of you, you're not off the hook. Anybody who sits here and signs and doesn't have something to say about these, absolutely egregious ICE raids. Shame on all of you. Every single one of you needs to talk about this.
My apologies to the audience. We do have specific rules, and this time is a time to speak about things that are being voted on tonight. She could have spoken her mind later on, we will have an opportunity for that. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak on something that we are voting on tonight? Something that is on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move forward. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Good to see everyone again. Want to thank everyone that attended the 9/11 ceremony last week. I think this was the highest attendance that we've had for this event. Appreciate the local schools for being in attendance and participating in this event. Thank you to everyone who made this ceremony a success. I hope everyone was able to enjoy the Guardian Championship last week at RTJ. It's an honor to have these professional golfers of the Epson Tour in our community. Think the weather was perfect this year, and the event was well, well-attended. Counselors, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-26 is in each of your mailboxes. While traditionally referred to as a mayor's budget, it is, in reality, the result of collaboration, planning, and input from all city departments. It reflects the dedication, professionalism, and shared commitment of our staff to meet the current and future needs of our community. This budget is intended to serve as both a roadmap and a living document. It outlines our goals, anticipated revenues, and funding priorities. However, passage of this budget doesn't mean that our coffers are full. Approval by council does not signify that all items are fully funded or ready for immediate execution. Rather, it provides a structure for informed decision-making and positions us to respond as resources and conditions evolve. Within this budget, we have prioritized equipping our employees with the tools and training necessary to fulfill the responsibilities efficiently, safely, and professionally. We also remain committed to transparency and accountability. This budget has been developed through internal discussions, and it will continue to be managed with oversight and responsiveness to both council and the public. Our goal is to ensure that every dollar is used responsibly in alignment with our community's values and priorities. Included in this document are sustained investment in core city services, funding for infrastructure and capital projects, adjustments for inflationary costs and employee benefits, continued commitment to long-term financial stability. We welcome your feedback and insights as we move toward adoption. Thank you to all of our department heads for your continued leadership, especially Daniel Oakley and Lisa Thresh. We'll be glad to have this draft document placed on the city website at council discretion. Counselor, on some project updates. Fairview Avenue, according to SDAC, the contractor, asphalt milling and paving between the existing road and the new curb section should begin within the next two weeks. This will not be paving of the entire road, as that will come at a later date. The local paving Phase 1 project is nearing completion. Traffic striping and marking work will begin within the next few weeks, and as well, Phase 2 paving is scheduled to begin in October. On a new project, and with city council approval, we have traffic signal equipment and pole upgrades that will be coming at the following intersections: East Main and Chestnut, East Main and Washington, and East Main and Northington. This project will be funded through the carbon reduction funding grants that are available to us. We're expecting to receive a funding agreement for this project from Aldott within the next few weeks, presented to the city council for approval. Counselors, I'd like to address recent comments regarding the North Highland Park project. And let me be very clear, this project is not being delayed due to racial discrimination. Any suggestion of the contrary is both misleading and deeply unproductive. I personally worked with city councilors and staff to secure $1 million in federal funding for this project, plus two additional bathrooms. One bathroom at Low Pickett Park, and another at Spinner's Park. In addition to that, we have committed another $300,000-plus from our local budget to ensure this park gets the attention and investment it deserves. North Highland Park is a vital part of our community, and our intention has always been to deliver a high-quality renovation that reflects the needs and values of the people who use it. We're facing some logistic and construction hurdles, like most major capital projects, but those are being addressed and are being worked forth in good faith. Again, this is not about politics, and it certainly isn't about race. It's about getting the job done right for the residents who rely on this park. I welcome constructive collaboration from any member of this council who shares that goal. The new bid opening for North Highland Park is set for Thursday, October the 9th, at 10:00 a.m., and I consider this progress over politics. Also, counselors, I'd like to welcome everyone back to the newly renovated council chambers. Hope you have noticed your new monitors we have up there, and as well, we have some bugs to work out and a punch list to complete, and so, again, I just have to say, please pardon our progress, as we still have some more work to do in here, but all in all, I'm very, very proud of what we've been able to accomplish as well. But it's great to be back here at 101 West Main Street. Madam President, enter my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for the mayor?
Yes, ma'am. May I just have a question, because we've been hearing a lot of interest about streaming live our council meetings. I wanted to make note that I've spoken to everybody here on the council, and I think we're all in favor of doing that, and I'd appreciate it if you would get with IT and start getting that pushed forward.
Yes, sir. We have a new update of some equipment. Still, we got to get a microphone, our lecturn, a dies, not a dies, but our lecturn is going to be replaced as well, a few more other little items, but I feel like that we'll make certain that happens ASAP.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do any other counselors have any questions or comments for Mr. Mayor?
I would like to ask the city webmaster to please post the proposed budget so that it is publicly available, and I will be reaching out to council members immediately to set up possible available dates for us to have a budget work session. So, be looking for that notification, and please be ready with your calendar so we can quickly get together and begin moving forward with our proposed budget. At this time, we will move into reports from the council on special committees. Counselor Sanders, do you have a report this evening? Counselor Jackson? Counselor Chambers? Counselor Merrick? Counselor Whaley? Counselor Stritchitt?
Yes, ma'am. Recently, the Parks and Recreation Committee met to discuss possible changes to the Christmas parade and a possible property purchase near Spinner's Park.
Thank you for that report. At this time, we will have a report from Mr. Oakley on our city finances.
First page in your packet is the general fund revenue report, and it shows that we have received $54,747,47 for the fiscal year to date. This represents a 2% increase of the same period in the prior year. Next page is the tax breakdown comparison, and on the tax side, we were up 5.25% when compared to the previous August. Next three pages show the general fund expenses broken down by department, and with 91.67% of the fiscal year complete, we have spent 81.7% of the budgeted expenditures in the general fund. Next page is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. The wastewater fund generated a net income from operations of $231,904 for the month. Operating expenses are in line with budget at 90.9%, while overall expenses are slightly below budget at 87.9%. Next page is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. The sanitation fund generated a net income for August of $107,244. Operating expenses are in line with budget for this fund as well, at 90%, while overall expenses are coming in under budget at 84.5%. Next page is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. The judicial fund generated a net income for August of $50,171. Overall expenses continue to be, to come in under budget at 82.4% for this fund. Next page is the bank balances report, and it shows the total of all bank balances citywide at the end of August was $52,892,574. The final page in your packets, the accounts payable and debt balances report. Total outstanding AP and debt balance citywide at the end of August was $67,370,107, while the city's non-enterprise fund debt was $36,547,107.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Oakley. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for Mr. Oakley? Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
Yes, if no one else does. When will this be on our website, and when will some of the paper, I know not the whole report, be available out front in paper form, but it'll be ready next week?
Yes, sir. So, we've been putting the debt report out there, and I put that out there earlier this afternoon, so it's available, several copies available on the front desk of City Hall, and we can get the other on the website, all the reports on the website tomorrow. And everyone, if you checked your box before I came in here, you didn't have a budget, you have a budget in your box now, so go back and grab it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Oakley? Thank you so much. At this time, we have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that might fall on tonight's agenda include Resolution Number One, to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at Ridgewood Road, North Memorial Drive, 705 Francis Street, 325 Festival Drive, and 113 Quail Run abated, and charge any incurred expenses to the abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Two, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of stagnant water at 101 Kingswood Drive. Number Three, resolution to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 1380 Blue Jays Place. Resolution Number Four, to set a public hearing to declare the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 172 Maple Street, 710 Taylor Street, and 309 Angela Street to be unsafe, and a public nuisance, and order their abatement pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Five, to appropriate fixed expenses, salaries, and continuing policy procedures pending the adoption of the City of Prattville fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Resolution Number Six, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 722A Francis Street a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Seven, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 324 Marlet Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Eight, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 344 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Nine, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1121 Honeysuckle Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Ten, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 340 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, or Chestnut Street, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Eleven, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 839 Heather Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Twelve, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 133 Warwick Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Thirteen is to waive the fee for the Atalga County Fair Organization during the week of October 7th through 11th, 2025. And Resolution Number Fourteen is to surplus one 2010 freighter, limb, loader, truck from the sanitation department. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda? We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. All in favor of creating the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. The consent agenda is now properly before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda? We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding adopting the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is adopted, which allows us to move into our regular agenda for this evening. Item number one is a resolution to ratify and affirm and grant permission to the Prattville High School Athletic Association to create a tailgate village and sponsor parking area and collect a fee for the 2025 football season. Item number one was held from the last meeting. It is now properly before us. Is there any further discussion on Resolution Number One? Yes, sir, Mr. Whaley?
Just as a point of reference, there were a lot of questions that went around about this resolution, and there were some, a lot of questions about a fee being collected and things like that. Having looked at the ordinance, and I'm referencing ordinance Section 51-23A, and I spoke with the city attorney a little while ago, and he hasn't had an opportunity to overlook that, I interpret it that the Parks and Recreation Director has the authority to authorize what was being asked for under ordinance Section 51-23A. I'm not really sure, maybe other than the fee that was associated with it, why it really had to come before us in form of a resolution. So, the fee is not being charged to the public to park in the area that is designated. So, I mean, that was my only question, and like I said, I brought that to Mr. Odom right before the meeting, so I don't know if there's any further that you may have on that.
Mr. Odom, would you like to address this?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Whaley. So, what a resolution is, it's an expression of the intent of the council, and I did have a chance to look at that code section. I agree with you. I think the director does have that, so you guys can choose to adopt that expression of intent or not. I do think that is within her purview pursuant to that ordinance to authorize what's being done.
Is there any further discussion regarding Resolution Number One? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number One, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and Resolution Number One is adopted. Item number two is an ordinance to grant Southern Light L- Item number two is an ordinance to grant Southern Light LLC a non-exclusive franchise for the limited authority to construct a fiber-optic transmission line in the City of Prattville in and along its rights-of-way. Counselor Stritchick, will you please introduce ordinance by title only?
To grant Southern Light LLC a non-exclusive franchise for the limited authority to construct a fiber-optic transmission line in the City of Prattville in and along its right-of-way. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for us to vote on this ordinance this evening, we must first suspend the rules. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clark, will you please conduct a roll call vote for us?
Counselor Sanders?
Yeah.
Counselor Jackson?
Yeah.
Counselor Chambers?
Yeah.
Counselor Merrick?
Yeah.
Counselor Whaley?
Yeah.
Counselor Stritchick?
Yeah.
The rules are now suspended, and ordinance number two is properly before us. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance number two? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Ordinance number two is adopted. Item number three is also an ordinance to grant Unity Fiber Golf Co. LLC a non-exclusive franchise for the limited authority to construct a fiber-optic transmission line in the City of Prattville in and along its rights-of-way. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, ma'am. To grant Unity Fiber Golf Company LLC a non-exclusive franchise for the limited authority to construct a fiber-optic transmission line in the City of Prattville in and along its rights-of-way. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. In order for us to vote on this ordinance tonight, we must first suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clark, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Counselor Sanders?
Yeah.
Counselor Jackson?
Yeah.
Counselor Chambers?
Yeah.
Counselor Merrick?
Yeah.
Counselor Whaley?
Yeah.
Counselor Stritchick?
Yeah.
The rules are now suspended, and ordinance number three is properly before us. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number three, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And item number three is adopted. Item number four is also an ordinance to amend the City of Prattville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Fifty, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article Three, Offenses Involving Public Peace and Order, Division One, Generally, Sections Fifty to Forty-nine. Counselor Stritchick, will you introduce this ordinance for us, please?
Yes. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the City of Prattville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Fifty, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article Three, Offenses Involving Public Peace and Order, Division One, Generally, Section Fifty and Forty-nine, is hereby amended to read as follows. Section Fifty, Forty-nine, drink in open possession or attempt to drink, sell, et cetera, liquor, wines, or malt-brewed beverages in public places. It shall be unlawful for any person to drink, to have an open unconcealed possession or custody for drinking, selling, serving, dispensing, to give away, or to attempt to drink, sell, serve, or dispense, or to give away any liquor, wine, or malt-brewed beverages, while upon any street, avenue, or alley, or in the public building, or upon any public property, or while in any other public place. As used in this section, the term "public place" means includes any public place or gathering which the public generally attends, or is amended to either by invitation, common consent, or right of payment, of an omission of or other charge, and without limiting the generalality of the foregoing shall include any theater or other places or of amusement and any athletic consent, provided that such term "public place" shall not mean or include premises which have been duly licensed by the city for sale there on such beverages. The Doster Memorial Community Center located at 424 South Northern Street, the Prattville Senior Citizen Center located at 334 Doster Road, 342 South Chestnut Street, 124 West Main Street, and the park area located along South Court Street, provided that proper application has been made ten days prior to the event, and the mayor and the mayor has issued a permit. This section does not apply to possessions of alcohol beverages and motor vehicles. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for us to vote on this ordinance tonight, we must first suspend the rules. Do I hear a motion to suspend?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clark, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Counselor Sanders?
Yeah.
Counselor Jackson?
Yeah.
Counselor Chambers?
Yeah.
Counselor Merrick?
Yeah.
Counselor Whaley?
Yeah.
Counselor Stritchick?
Yeah.
Counselor B?
Yeah.
The rules are now suspended, and ordinance number four is properly before us. Do we have any discussion regarding ordinance number four?
Um.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, quick question. What are we trying to make sure that we clear up here? Andrew, is there anything that we're trying to clear up? Or is there some type of issue that we're trying to address via this ordinance?
Counselor Jackson, as my understanding, what this ordinance is doing is, it is expanding the definitions of those exceptions towards the end to include 124 West Main Street and the park area along South Court Street.
Is there further discussion regarding ordinance number four? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number four, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number four is adopted. Item number five is a resolution to award bid number zero-two-five-zero-one-one and authorize the mayor to sign a three-year engagement letter with Warren Averett LLC for single audit and financial statement auditing services at a cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas, Section eleven forty-three eighty-five, Code of Alabama, nineteen-seventy-five, as amended, requires the City of Prattville to conduct an annual audit of the city's finances, and whereas the city solicited request for proposal for said auditing services for fiscal years twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, and twenty-twenty-seven, and whereas the Evaluation Committee comprised of the mayor, finance director, and deputy finance director reviewed all technical and cost proposals received and determined that Warren Averett LLC will best serve as auditors to provide the city with necessary expertise, and whereas, Section forty-one sixteen fifty-one A-three, Code of Alabama, nineteen-seventy-five, as amended, allows contracts to secure services with consultants possessing a high degree of professional skill, including certified public accountants, to be let without competitive bidding, and whereas the city desires that the city's fiscal years twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven auditing service be awarded to Warren Averett LLC at a cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number twenty-five dash oh-eleven to Warren Averett LLC and authorizes the mayor to sign an engagement letter for said single audit and financial statement audit services for three years in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars per fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, uh, not, I'm sorry, ninety thousand dollars for fiscal year two-thousand-twenty-five, ninety-five thousand dollars for fiscal year two-thousand-twenty-six, and one-hundred thousand for fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven, and said funds are approved and appropriated to be paid from budget line item finance slash auditing. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number five? Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Um, I've had multiple constituents reach out to me wanting to know why we're choosing to do a three-year contract instead of a one-year contract, so, um, Andrew, Mayor, also wouldn't mind answering that with them.
Would, Mr. Mayor, would you like to address, or would you like for me to have Mr. Oakley come forward?
It might not hurt to have him come forward. Uh, as he's coming forward, I think it's because it's, uh, it gets some continuity for them to be able to come in and look over the processes and to build up quite a reliable report.
Sure, yeah. What, what standard in the public accounting industry is a three-year contract? There's a neighboring entity that by state law requires them rotate every two years, which is problematic for those accountants. By the time they get on it, they've gotten familiar, and then they have to roll off. We did one-year agreements with Jackson Thornton and Company for several years during, I think shortly after the mayor may have taken over with financial issues and questions and things, at least from what I understand back then. With rotating, and this is a totally new firm, they have done some work with us when I first got here, a little agreed-upon procedures engagement, but I am familiar with the firm. Uh, they're out of Montgomery, and, or this office that'll be working on the jobs out of Montgomery. So, um, three years is, you know, kind of, it's stand, industry standard, but it's also really helpful from both their side and our side, because it takes a little while for them to get to know us, so to speak, and how things work here with the city finances and that sort of thing, so there's a whole lot of documentation that they have to do in the first year that they then can rely upon on the second and third year. So, even though the cost increases as the years go on, the biggest expense and the amount of money that they're going to put into the job will be in year one, and that's why they're going to kind of make a little more of their money in year two and three.
Thank you.
I have a question, too, if you don't mind, Daniel. What, what are you guys, what are some of the main things you guys are looking for when you make decisions like this, and, you know, as far as what makes one company stand out more than another, so to speak, when you have the committee, uh, trying to make a decision?
Sure, and we, we had, and I don't mind sharing, we had three firms that submitted an RFP to us. All three were qualified. Um, I've worked with, well, really all three, but, um, you know, if this is awarded, that'd be the third, but, um, you know, it, we look for quality of staff and experience, more so than price, so, you know, price is not my biggest concern. Now, we're not going to go and, you know, get ripped off with an audit cost either. Um, and I did go back with each of the three firms and met with them individually without letting them know what the other costs were, but I met with them individually to get a best and final offer from them, and gave them the chance to take another look at their fees, but as part of that, we, it wasn't a shakedown. We also sat down, and Carly and I sat down with each of them, to let each firm know exactly what all these two CPAs that the city employs do for the audit process. Carly has five years of auditing experience, I have six years of auditing experience prior to coming to the city. We know what's required, and we know how to do a lot of the legwork that helps reduce the number of hours that those firms have to put in. And if you haven't worked on a job with us, then we wanted to make sure that we clarified that for people, you know, and, you know, Martin Jenkins previously did it for the previous three years, we had never worked with them prior, um, and, so they were familiar most with us. Jackson Thornton knows Carly and I very well. Warren Averett, you know, we needed to explain, more make sure all three of them knew exactly what all we do for the audit. So, that's, that's part of it. Staffing is another part of it, and we looked in detail at the level of staff that each firm has, that they were going to, that they were committed to put on our job. So, you know, I, Martin Jenkins may have fourteen-hundred governmental audits that they do or something crazy, it's a large number, but they have, it's a, it's a huge firm. Well, I was more interested in what the local staff that are going to be on our job, what their experience is, and also the levels of staffing. So, you may have a couple of first years, which is fine, uh, you're going to have a supervisor, um, or an in-charge, and you're going to have a manager on the job that should be on-site most of the time, then you're going to have a partner or director that's going to be a little more remote and high-level in their review, but I wanted to make sure we, and Carly, too, wanted to make sure that we had adequate experience at each level. And I think we got that with our recommendation.
Any further questions for Mr. Oakley? Thank you, Mr. Oakley. Any further discussion regarding resolution number five? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number five, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number five is adopted. Resolution number six is to authorize economic incentives to AJM LLC Prattville, Alabama for Project Queen. Counselor Stritchick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Sure. Whereas, Resolution Book twenty-twenty-five dash A, page two-thirteen, on July fifteenth, two-thousand-twenty-five, the City Council of the City of Prattville proved recommended project incentives for AJM LLC Prattville, Alabama. Whereas, Amendment Number seven-seven-two to the Constitution of Alabama, nineteen-oh-one, Section nine-four-oh-one, A-three, of the recompil, compiled Constitution of Alabama, here and after referred to as Amendment Number seven-seven-two, authorizes the public to lend its credit or grant public funds and things of value in aid of, or any corporation or any other business in, in entity for the purpose of promoting the economic development of the city. And whereas, specific incentives consist of tax rebate, noneducational sales, tax related to the project in an amount of five million dollars, and is intent that the tax rebate shall accrue until five million dollars has been rebated in full or the expiration of eleven years, whichever comes first. Whereas, the city as a public body finds that it is necessary, proper, and in the public interest in accordance with Amendment seven-seventy-two, that the public body provide the incentives listed in here in AJM LLC Prattville, Alabama, in connection with the development of the said property. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville is hereby specifically authorized a tax rebate of five million dollars until such amount has been rebated in full or to expiration of eleven years, whichever comes first. Be it further resolved that the City Council hereby authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number six? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number six, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign? And any abstentions? Okay. And resolution number six is adopted. Resolution number seven is to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget and award bid number zero-two-five-zero-one-two to Ingram Equipment Company LLC for one twenty-twenty-five or newer used hydraulic knuckle boom truck for the sanitation department at a cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars, with a net cost to the city not to exceed one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, whereas, the City of Prattville Sanitation Department has identified a need to upgrade one boom truck to better serve the needs of its customers, and whereas the sanitation department had specifications drafted for a twenty-twenty-five or newer used hydraulic knuckle boom brush and limb loader truck with a dump body and chassis, and whereas one sealed bid was received, opened, and read on September eleventh, two-thousand-twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the council chambers at City Hall, and Ingram Equipment Company LLC was the lowest responsible bidder at a cost of two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars for said truck. And whereas, in Resolution Book twenty-twenty-five-B, page, I don't have a particular page, um, the City Council of the City of Prattville authorized the surplus of one two-thousand-ten freightliner limb loader truck to trade into Ingram Equipment Company toward the purchase of said truck, and whereas the credit for said surplus truck is twenty-one thousand dollars, and whereas the net cost to the city of the, for the purchase of said truck is one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget is hereby amended as follows. Decrease the sanitation reserves by one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Increase the sanitation gain-loss on fixed assets by twenty-one thousand dollars, and increase the sanitation capital outlay by two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Be it further resolved that the City Council hereby awards bid number twenty-five dash oh-twelve to Ingram Equipment Company LLC in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars, uh, net cost to the city not to exceed one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars for said truck, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget line item sanitation capital outlay. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number seven? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number seven, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number seven is adopted. Resolution number eight is to amend fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget and to authorize the release of funds to purchase two twenty-twenty-six Chevrolet trucks through state contract number MA-two-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four-nine-one-eight from McSweeney Auto Group Clanton LLC for the engineering department at a total cost not to exceed eighty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars and thirty-two cents. Counselor Jackson, will you please introduce this resolution for us?
Whereas, a need has been identified to purchase two twenty-twenty-six Chevrolet Silverado twenty-five-hundred HD trucks to replace aging vehicles in the engineering department, and where said truck is available through state contract number MA-two-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four-nine-one-eight from McSweeney Auto Group Clanton LLC at a cost of forty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars, sixteen cents. LLC at a cost of $44,240.16 each. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that fiscal year 2025 budget is hereby amended as follows. Decrease engineering salaries and wages, $88,840.32. Increase engineering capital outlay, $88,840.32. Be it further resolved that funds in an amount not to exceed $88,840.32 for the purchase of said trucks is hereby authorized and approved to be paid to McSweeney Auto Group, Clanton LLC, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line item engineering capital outlay. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number eight? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number eight? Please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign? And resolution number eight is adopted. Resolution number nine is to support the City of Prattville in its application for grant funding through the State Industrial Development Authority, SIDA, site evaluation and economic development strategy seeds for property on Doster Industrial Boulevard. Counselor Merrick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Act 2023-035 referred to as the Seeds Act addresses the need for industry-ready industrial sites in the state. And whereas SIDA has grant money available to municipalities for site assessments, and whereas the City of Prattville desires to submit a grant application for new assessments for property on Doster Industrial Boulevard. And where a said application allows for a request of up to $150,000 and requires a population-based local formula match established by SIDA at point 428. And whereas the proposal for all studies is $136,050 with seeds grant dollars of up to $77,820.60, and required matching funds of $58,229.40 from the municipality. And whereas any local match will be based on the actual amount awarded through the grant based on the formula established by SIDA, a property option agreement for a minimum of two years, and will need to be authorized to be paid from the economic development budget. And whereas said grant application is due September 30, 2025, and requires authorization to submit the application and commitment to all matching funds required to complete the proposed project. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby supports the submission of the fiscal 2025, 2026 seeds grant application and commits to all matching funds. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the mayor to submit said grant application and execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number nine? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number nine? Please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number nine is adopted. Resolution number 10 is to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget and authorize the release of funds to purchase Violytics Pro software from Violytics Americas for the engineering department at a cost not to exceed $39,000. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas engineering has identified a need to purchase Violytics Pro main road software, and where said software would be a tool utilized to grade the current roadways or assign scoring to helping in identifying and selecting roads for repair and repaving. And where software, said software is available through Violytics Americas at a total cost not to exceed $39,000. And where Section 411651A8 Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended, allows a purchase of software applications to be let without competitive bidding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that fiscal year 2025 budget is hereby amended as follows. Decrease engineering streetlights, $39,000. Increase engineering capital outlay, $39,000. Be it further resolved that funds in a total amount not to exceed $39,000 for the purchase of said software is hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Violytics Americas, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line item engineering capital outlay. Be it further resolved that the mayor hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number 10? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number 10? Please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign? And resolution number 10 is adopted. Resolution number 11 is to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget and to authorize the purchase of one Evolution Golf Cart from True Pool Trailers LLC for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed $11,950. Net cost to the city, zero dollars. Counselor Strickland, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas the Parks and Recreation Department has a need for a multipurpose transportation during various events. Whereas True Pool Trailers LLC has an eight-person Evolution Carrier Golf Cart available for $11,950. Whereas a donation has been received by the Parks and Recreation Department to be used towards said need. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the fiscal budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase general fund donations, cultural and recreation, $11,950. Increase Parks and Recreation capital outlay, $11,950. Be it further resolved that the funds in an amount, $11,950, at no cost to the city for the purchase of said golf cart is hereby authorized and approved to the paid True Pool Trailers LLC, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal 2025 budget line item Parks and Recreation capital outlay. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number 11? I would just like to add, whomever our donor is, we are very grateful. We appreciate that. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this. Any further discussion? All in favor of resolution number 11? Please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign? And resolution number 11 is adopted. This concludes the items on our agenda tonight. At this time, the council will welcome comments from persons present regarding other issues. Please state and write your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Anyone wish to come forward at this time?
Ma'am.
Hi, Melissa Strickland, 589 Marlin Drive. This is just a note of positivity. I have, I'm currently the board of Wayoff Broadway Theater here in town, which of course is funded by the city and part of Parks and Rec. It is amazing to me how many people in our city do not know we have a theater still after all this time. But I just want to encourage you guys, please know that you are welcome as councilor. I know the mayor, Mr. Sanders, a few of you I've seen recently here in the last few productions. We're getting ready to open this week. And don't bring your grandkids because it's PG. But, you know, we'd love to have you come. If you haven't been to the theater in a while, come see kind of some of the improvements that have been going on and what the needs still are. We've done wonderful kids camps this summer, and we're getting adults in for classes and really kind of, with the help from the city, allowing us to expand some of the things that we've been doing and the personnel who are very knowledgeable in the area of theater, which has been amazing. So the cultural arts staff is just really doing a good job, and I would love for you to come see what a good job everyone's doing. Talk to the community members who are involved in the theater, who are directing, who are on the board, who are acting, stage managing, designing costumes, volunteering their time, and just be part of that community as well. I know you have a lot of events to go to, and so you can't make everything, but we're going to be announcing our season soon. And in the next three weeks, if you've got a night free, come see what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland. Yes, sir. Please sign your name and address, and then state those for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
My name is Daniel Woodson. I live on 103 Sycamore Drive. I got several topics I'd like to discuss, so I'm just going to briefly touch all of them and see how many I get through. First off, Mr. Whaley, thank you for pointing out that the first resolution didn't need to be brought up. I think that shows a great example of your leadership and your experience and your symbol of doing your homework. So I do appreciate that as a guy who does a lot of homework myself as a citizen, appreciate you doing yours. But I do think that's another great example of us as citizens and city council people needing more time because he wasn't able to get an answer from the lawyer until right before the meeting today, and then we had to get clarification in the meeting. So if we could get the information posted, preferably by the city's Prattville's Facebook page on the Facebook, and allow the agenda to be known to the public soon as possible, preferably earlier than Friday. Thankfully, we do have a citizen, Diane Rollings, that posted religiously on Friday for us to try to give us an ample amount of time to do our homework to be able to address you with our concerns. I would have spoke about the AJM thing with the ICE lady coming in and expressing her concerns. I kind of got thrown off, and then it was rushed into the mayor's report before I could even realize what was going on. So congratulations on giving a multimillion-dollar corporation 3% more profit than every small business in the City of Prattville that is dealing with a Prattville agricultural business. Congratulations. That's not what I would have done, but that's what you decided. What else was it? Oh, the numbers. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mr. Whaley did email me, or not Mr. Whaley, Mr. Oakley emailed me this past week about the one cent sales tax. He told me that there was three different accounting methods because there's three different reports taken at three different timeframes. Really confusing to me. I'm not an accountant. I did have multiple accountants reach out to me and express that, you know, this is a proper thing, that a reconciliation report is done. But as Mr. Oakley said in his email to me that we're comparing apples to oranges. So I put in a public request to have every transaction report related to the city ordinance pertaining to the one cent sales tax, and I will personally calculate every transaction and separate it into categories and come up with a number, an aggregate number for 2024, and compare it with the financial report of the yearly report, y'all's report, and see if it verifies or not. I'm sure it does. Everything I've seen is starting to look pretty good. I'm starting to get more understanding of it. I have not reached out to Mr. Oakley in this past week because I'm waiting on the transaction report. That way I can compare oranges to oranges because that's what I understand. I don't understand three different accounting methods. So that was above my pay grade, above my understanding. But I do appreciate the many council members that pushed the issue to be able to give me the information after waiting roughly a month to be able to compare apples to oranges. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Mr. White, please come forward. State your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Good evening. Reverend Dr. L. White II, 621 West Fourth Street. The Bible says in the book of James, "Yea, a man may say, 'Thou hast faith, and I have works.' Show me thy faith without thy works, and I will show thee my faith by my works." You know, in the military, we had a thing called impropriety, the appearance of impropriety. That mean the lack of decorum, the appearance of lack of decorum. You tell us, meeting after meeting, after y'all approve for all the improvements of North Highland Park, and say it's not racist, it's not this, it's not that. But yet, when you see other things around that has high propriety, and that's not being done, what do you expect the people to think? You give them the appearance of that being said. That's what, that's what impropriety mean. Also, when you go around and you treat citizens like second-class citizens in a country that I did fight for four times, that voted you into your seats, decorum. That needs to be one of the words, and considered to be one of y'all's words. Transpirit accountability. Let's talk about this budget. We, you say you have transparency. It's not. A lot of times, the citizens don't know half of the things that being put in that budget. We need to see the budget, and we need to be explaining why you're spending the money in the budget. Because it's our money, our taxpayer money. You need to be held accountable. Yeah, you say you got an audit, you want to do three years. I disagree with that. You can do it every two years because you don't need to have the same artist doing, doing the auditing, and you being friend to friend, especially when you are a prior auditor. You know, failed promises. We've been promised this, promised that. But when you go around and you look at all the other things that being moved around in Prattville, ain't no second and third and fourth and fifth different quotes being done. Why can't we go ahead and move on, on North Highland Park? I'm just asking. It makes sense. If you don't want people to say, oh, this is not that, this is that, then do what is needed. The thing that I'm going to ask for, and I've been asking for the last six years, especially when the new, when the new city council is sworn in, is to do a forensic audit. Because you can definitely tell where things are done when you show where the money is at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Alyssa Brown, 222 Summit Parkway. As I previously said, a yes vote signal support for a deal that goes against local business owners and contradicts the values of your project, your project that you signed off on, Project 2040. Why would you go through the motions of voting on these resolutions when you're going to vote yes on everything, every single thing, all in unison? Regardless of how many times your constituents warn you about its negativity and how it could impact its community and your constituents, the people who have you in office to support them, you don't listen to them. It's insane. Not having a debate or a personal opinion is not truly caring for your community. If not one person asks one single question on the resolution ordinance, whatever you bring up, are you even actively engaged? Because for me, it sounds like y'all aren't. It sounds like you're just like, oh, yeah, whatever, sure thing. We can just chat GPT this. It's fine. So, you know, now this is the theater that everyone is already attending. So, you know, this is public theater. So, I mean, I just can't understand how every single one of you agrees on everything all the time. Not one person at least just raises one question every single thing. Like, I mean, I coached young girls, and I have them think for themselves and ask questions for themselves, and they're looking up to you guys, and this is what they'll see, is people just sitting here and just be like, yeah, that's a great idea. I don't know anything about it. I didn't do the research on rural King, and I didn't know what they did in Kingsport, Tennessee. But hey, that sounds great. I'm just saying. The younger generations are going to have to put up with this, and we're tired of it.
Now we will move into, I'm sorry, we have one more.
One more. One more. Finneken. John Lee Finneken, 211, Dear Trace. I'm kind of following on her because on resolution number one about the granting permission for the tailgate party, I wrote all of you and asked you, I said, who is or what is the Prattville High School Athletic Association? I did not get an answer. I got a reply, but I did not get an answer. And yet you've approved to give the fees or whatever grant permission. So I don't understand that. I had said, go ahead and just, you know, make the resolution fail and then bring a new one up. But anyway, also, I have to talk about the fiasco of the Park and Rec meeting. You guys were there. And I had written to Kelly in the morning. I said, can we please have a portable sound system because you can't hear in the Doster Center auditorium? She wrote me and said that she would send it to Paula to find something. You guys didn't have it. We've complained about not being able to hear meetings in there. Well, guess what? We couldn't hear. You heard from other people. And in fact, I'm going to bring this up. Someone asked the mayor when he was speaking to please stand up and, you know, talk there, and he said, no, he wasn't, no, I'm not, I'm not going to do it. But we have asked you and asked you for things to be done. Portable sound systems can't be hard to put in so we can hear you. Portable sound systems can't be hard to put in so we can hear you. It's the same like the fiasco of the last meeting. We couldn't hear you. They had to turn up the, the sound system. Also, please spink distinctly into the microphones when you're speaking. And I wish you would remove those signs and put them down lower somehow. It hides your faces. We can't see you. We can't see you. But the, the meeting for the Park and Rec, again, if you have a meeting, for God's sakes, get a portable, portable sound system. Also, please don't schedule meetings that conflict with other meetings. There was a BCA meeting that I would like to have gone to, but it was the same as the Park and Rec. You can look at calendars. You can set it up somehow that at least we'll be able to attend meetings separately and they, and we don't have to decide which one we're going to do. But that Park and Rec meeting was, that was unbearable. I mean, it was just, people actually got up and almost stood by the chairs, stood by the tables because they could not hear. So, anyway, I had to say that.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address.
Jackie Nix, 706 Running Brook Circle. You have heard me come before you and speak about the library multiple times throughout the years. With the budget coming up, I have spoken to many of you already about budget concerns with the library. I want to personally invite you to the board meeting. The, the library board meeting will be on September 25 at 4:30 PM, Billingsley Public Library. This is a reschedule from a meeting that was supposed to be held on August 7. We were not given, the public was not given a reason for why the reschedule happened, but it is next week, September 25. And I do encourage you to attend if you are able. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Thea Langley. As, as you all know, I have CC'd you on three, I believe it was three different emails with a records request for the 2018 pay study. So this records request has been denied three times. One of the main denials is calling the pay study a draft. So Condry and Associates out of Georgia was the ones that did this pay study in 2018. And it was paid for, of course, by taxpayer money. In requesting this pay study, it was referred to me that it is a draft. And drafts are not applicable to the Attorney General's public request. It is an exemption, basically, is the response that I got. So I contacted Steve Condry today out of Georgia. And I spoke with him about do they, do they typically submit finished products for $52,000? Or do they make it a habit of charging and submitting a draft proposal? And he literally laughed out loud. He said, if we did that as a contractual draft proposal, that would be the longest contract that we have ever had within our business. So coming from the company that did the pay study, what they submitted to you guys is not a draft. It is a finished project. Finished projects under the Public Records Act are, the state airs on the side of caution when it comes to public records. And so I will again submit by email a request to get a copy of this because not only did we pay for that with public monies, it's not a draft, it is a completed project. It also was used and has been used. When I talked to them today, they stated that they have also, which I wasn't aware of this, but they stated that they also had done an update either in 2022 or 2023. So that should be made public record. It should be made public record because you guys took that information in the pay study and you rationalized pay grades as well as pay increases up to almost 60% for the administrative staff here at City Hall in the mayor's office. So we as constituents have the right to see this. If it is not given to me, I will move forward requesting-
Ms. Langley, you have run out of time.
Requesting an Attorney General's opinion on that. Thank you.
At this time, we will move into our closing comments for the evening. Mr. Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, ma'am. I certainly do appreciate all the hard work and dedication our department heads and employees and especially the staff, as I mentioned earlier, with our finance committee and our HR department as well, working on this budget and, and some other things like tonight when y'all voted on agenda item number 10. That's a very useful tool that's going to be coming around as part of the AI move that's across the country. It will actually be able to base, basically be a multiplier for our department. So they'll be able to do their jobs efficiently and effectively. We also have some other plans in our upcoming budget that will reflect some of that as well. But I look forward to working with y'all on the upcoming budget. Any questions? But also appreciate all the hard work and dedication that y'all do to get us to this point. Because I know a lot of times you're communicating with the department head. You go into executive sessions when there's certain projects that come up. There is a lot of work that goes into it individually as committee chairs or collectively as a body when y'all go into executive session. So again, I thank, and thank y'all for your hard work and dedication and the staff as well. Thank you.
Councilor Sanders, any closing comments? Councilor Jackson?
I just wanted to announce that, which I'm pretty excited about, that I have officially completed the requirements for the advanced certification municipal official through the Alabama League of Municipalities. The certification signifies that I have undergone over 80 hours of specialized training in leadership, fiscal responsibility, infrastructure and community development. This training is particularly significant because back, starting in January 2025 of this year, was January 1st, 2025, which is the beginning of the year, the Alabama Legislature required that all municipal officials complete annual training under the Alabama Municipal Officials Training Act. I'm proud to say that I've already, I'm in compliance and prepared to meet the standards on behalf of the people of the City of Prattville. And as I conclude my ninth year of service on the council and as we prepare to reorganize for the new quadrennium, I want to inform my colleagues and the public that I am ready to seek position, a leadership position, not as president, but pro team going into the next quadrennium. I believe that my experience, commitment to transparency and dedication to professional development have equipped me to provide steady leadership and ensure that our council begins a new term under united and focused progress. Thank you.
Councilor Chambers, closing comments? Councilor Merrick, closing comments?
Yes, ma'am. Want to thank our Chief Thompson and our police force to, and apologize to our folks that are here tonight that come to our meetings to see what happened earlier tonight. And I think we handled the situation professionally. I tip my hat to you, Madam President, for handling that. I also want to take this opportunity, if Chief Bingham is still here. I want to thank the guys over at Archie Plowler's Fire Station One. Last week, I had a little family situation. And you guys were spot on to help me with what was going on. I won't go into full detail, but thank you. And was at the, as a matter of fact, at the Guardian tournament for lunch and all, when they had the tournament here, the ladies playing and saw some of the guys and they were asking me the same, hey, is everything okay? And so, thanks. It's, it's great that we have folks that care. I mean, they do things every day and thank you. We don't take you for granted, ever. You protect our community and can't thank all of y'all enough. So thank you.
Councilor Whaley, any closing remarks? Councilor Strichak, closing remarks? Our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, October 7, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And I will be sending an email to ask about availability to council members to set a budget work session. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. Is there a second? All in favor, say yea. Opposed, nays. We are adjourned.